Good evening, everyone. You can hear us? Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us for our second round of public meetings to discuss the Tompkins County Center of Government project. Last month, we visited different towns and villages to learn from residents about how they are experiencing access to government services. Tonight, we are streaming live from the legislature chambers in Ithaca to look at some design options. People can join us on Zoom, watch us live on YouTube, or come back later to watch the recording. My name is Monica Salvage. I'm the communications director for Tompkins County, and I'd like to take you through quickly what you can expect for the next hour, hour and a half. First, let's start with the purpose. Why are we here? Why do we even have public meetings? We have those things to gather information from residents about what they would like to see in the new center of government, including how they currently access services. So that was what we did last month. And then, how they could be improved, and also now we're talking about, we started talking about the design of the project. We also want to remember that this project includes the deconstruction of three structures in the Dewitt Park Historic District. And those community engagement meetings and the community survey give the public an opportunity to share input as provided under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. So, we take a quick look at the agenda. We're going to hear the results of the community survey, the first community survey where we asked you about how you experience access to government services. You also hear about sustainability. We're going to be talking about parking. And then, we're going to get into site design, preliminary building layout, and the whole experience of coming to the new center of government. And then also some exterior aesthetics and things that we want to hear from you, what you want to do around the center of government, and what you would like that to look like. And then, we're really going to open it up for discussion and Q and A from your side. So we have a number of people here in the audience today. So when the official presentation is over, you can raise your hand if you would like to ask a question or comment. And then, I would ask you to go to the front microphone there so everybody can hear you here and also at home on YouTube or through Zoom. And then, we also have people via Zoom that joined us. So again, when the official presentation is over, we will promote those people so they can actually speak and ask questions. And then, we'll figure this out as we go along. So now, I'd like to turn it over to Koi Thompson from Holt Architects, and he's going to introduce his team.
Yeah. Thank you, Monica. I want to present to you guys, because I don't know even where the cameras are, but the screen and everything else is here. So I apologize if my back is to you a lot of the presentation. My name is Koi Thompson. I'm principal architect at Holt Architects. I'm going to sort of, well, as the project continues to sort of grow and develop, we have more people that we'll be bringing to these meetings to present to you. Is that feedback supposed to be happening? I guess it's okay. So why don't we, Tim, if you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Tim Faulkner. I'm a senior transportation manager with Fisher Associates. And as part of this presentation tonight, I'll be talking about the parking situation.
I am Laura Syb. I'm a landscape architect with Fisher Associates here in Ithaca, and I'm one of the designers on the project.
Likewise, good evening. My name is Ryan Kovak. I'm a senior landscape architect, project manager with Fisher Associates, working on the site design with Laura and Tim.
Hi, everybody. I'm Cindy Kaufman from Holt Architects, and I am an architect and interior designer from Holt Architects. And I've been with Holt for about 25 years.
You are fearless leader, Arel.
Arel Damar, I'm director of facilities for Tompkins County Facilities Department.
So in June, we started a first round of community engagement meetings. We actually did five of, around one of the meetings. Many of them were in individual municipalities of Tompkins County. We wanted to make sure we were reaching out and sort of connecting with people. Do other people hear that feedback, or is that just me?
I do.
I wonder where it's coming from.
There's a speaker right here.
Oh, yeah, it's coming out those speakers.
We're not hearing it back over here.
I think it's me, like, coming right out of those speakers. This is better. I can talk to you anyway. So in June, we sort of were collecting initial information before we even started to design, sort of asking people about the building. The survey information that we'll feed back at you today, a lot of the results and information that we got from that first round, they informed the early stages of design. There's another survey that I think Monica just opened before this meeting that gives you opportunity to comment on all of the things that we've developed so far as a team. And that input is really critical in terms of, you know, how we continue to progress the design forward. This project is really, you know, where the building will be occupied by a lot of county residents, by county employees, but the residents are the people that are going to use the building. So we're very interested in your information. Today, July, this will just be a single meeting, and it's, you know, live streamed, so people at home, you know, can also engage both in the presentation but also in the survey. And then, we're going to come back to you one more time in September. And then, so the feedback that we get from your comments in today's meeting will inform sort of the final design in September, and we'll come back and present that to you one final time. So there is a link to the survey right now. No, this is a link to the project website on the screen. From the project website, you can also get to the survey. So the survey that we did back during the five independent meetings, when I took this snapshot, had 167 respondents. It's almost to 200 now, but I had to sort of stop it at some point and get a snapshot. But that data, we have, but it's not part of what you're looking at today, but it's actually very consistent in terms of the information we have about the project. You know, it took residents an average of 24 minutes to complete, so we really appreciate the time, you know, that you put in and the thoughtful answers that we got from the survey data. I'm not going to present all of the slides. I know, Monica, maybe we have the survey available on the website, I'm not sure. But there was a question that we asked, which of these county departments that are slated for the project do you interact with and how do you engage with them? So you'll see that, you know, there's a lot of engagement with assessment, both virtual and, both in person and online, a lot of engagement with the county clerk, office for the aging. Many of these departments, you'll see, are departments that have ended up, many on the first, but some on the first and second floor. So they're very close to the street level. They're available, they're easy to get to, where more of the private, you know, some of these departments that, you know, you don't see as much public engagement with, you know, we're locating higher in the building. And Cindy will speak to that a little bit more later. And then, one of the highest engagement counties or departments on the list was the Board of Elections. As, if you remember, the Board of Elections is not going to be in this building. We're treating the Board of Elections in a similar way that we're treating the DMV. It'll be a dedicated facility. We're looking for a location for Board of Elections that will be convenient to people that'll have a lot of parking for those moments, you know, that people need to get absentee ballots or... So the Board of Elections won't be in this, in the new center of government building. This was the third, I think this was the third question. We had asked a question about, you know, are these goals that the county has identified similar to the goals you have for the project? But then, in the third question, we asked, are there other goals, you know, that the county residents have that we should be considering? On the screen, there are a list of some examples: lower taxes, accessibility in one building, convenient access to services, well-designed office space. And there's a word cloud on the bottom that identifies the words that were most frequently seen in the response to this question. And of course, we expected to see things like county and project and building. You can imagine everyone's using those in almost every sentence. But when we get to the next level of sort of frequency of some of these, we see things like ease of access and parking and service delivery. And in today's presentation, you'll see how some of those things are being thought about as we move forward with the design of the project. But it's been, it's been interesting to us to sort of understand more of the county priorities and the resident priorities in the project. Question four, identify barriers that you currently feel you've experienced in terms of accessing county services. The largest one was parking. So we are, we will be sharing the results of our parking study tonight. The second largest one is difficulty finding the right building. So just the concept of consolidating these services, and we'll, I'll speak more specifically to this in a moment, but we feel that the project is really well set up already for these things. But then, we were also really interested in the things that we didn't suggest as answers. We had a field called "other," and we got comments like, feeling like you can speak about confidential information in a secure place. I mean, that is a significant implication when we're thinking about designing a building like this. How do we solve those problems? Feeling like you are in a safe area where the building is located. Someone commented, they don't access county services, a sign from the DMV, which is perfect because it has parking. Almost everything else can be done by phone or online. And I think there were a lot of online responses to this comment, this survey sort of throughout. And it's, this online access to services is something that we are actually thinking about in the design of the new building. Like, what does it mean to virtually access these services? And how can the county help provide, like, online access or education to how it work, how these things happen online? And then, the last one, unnecessarily rigid security protocols. So we're starting to see that in newer county buildings that are addressing security, sort of in best practice ways. And that's certainly another conversation that we'll have about this building as we continue to develop the design. What's your preferred way to reach the center of government campus? So in the new location? And we were actually, I mean, we expected, you know, personal vehicles was going to be the number one answer to that question, and it was. But there was also a very high percentage of people that are responding to this survey that say they will walk to the building. We, in the traffic analysis that Tim will present shortly, we're actually calculating the building as if everyone's driving to it. So in terms of parking, we're planning for everyone to park, but we're really encouraged by the fact that there are a significant number of people that intend to walk. And then, we had planned to, we wanted to design in a way that would discourage, you know, personal vehicles on the site. Are there things that we can do that will help you feel more comfortable or encourage you to walk or bike or take public transportation? And overwhelmingly, 40% of respondents suggested attractive plantings and safe walking environments. So when we talk about the site today, you'll see how we're starting to think about spaces that are attractive to walk and safe to walk with lighting and things. And then, secure bike racks and covered bike racks, which are being planned as part of the project for not only this building but the adjacent, you know, county buildings, the old jail and old courthouse. Which of the following amenities, so there were a number of amenities that we were considering for the building. They potentially add cost to the project, but we wanted this building to be more than an office building. How can we benefit the county in other ways? There was a, the highest two answers here were community meeting rooms and training rooms. So you'll see, when Cindy presents the floor plans, that there are not only meeting rooms and training rooms in the new center of government, but we won't be sharing Daniel T. Tompkins' plans now, but we have conceptual plans for the Daniel T. Tompkins Building. And that will also have, you know, publicly shared community rooms and training rooms that people can utilize. And then, public computers to fill out forms was the second highest one here. And then, there were a number of others. And again, we were very interested in the kinds of other things that the community came up with independently. Public bathrooms, which is actually, the first time we heard public bathrooms, it was from a member of the legislature. And then, it came up quite a lot in community engagement. So you'll see our plans now have public restrooms before you go through security. So as part of the main lobby, we have some public restrooms. So if you're at the farmer's market or you're at the commons and just need a bathroom, even if, you know, you can't find one, the county is now providing them for you. Public bathrooms, bike lockers, LEED-certified building, kiosks with upcoming events, Wi-Fi and free parking for customers, and an overhang and awning. Someplace, I mean, the building sits right next to the main, you know, public transportation hub and someplace to, you know, get out of the, not only get out of the weather, but possibly sort of just duck into the interior lobby and stay warm while you're waiting for a bus. So this feedback was really informative in terms of how we think about the building. And then, would you attend, so would you use these amenities? And it was overwhelmingly occasionally. You know, we would use a meeting room or a training room if it was available at the county. So occasionally and then frequently, 19% rarely, only 8% never. So it does seem like it's possible that people that are filling out surveys are the people that would use these amenities. They're people that are participating in their government, but we're still encouraged, you know, by the data. Would you use a single one-stop service desk that could help you complete forms and make payments for multiple departments if available? And we were very encouraged that this was an overwhelming 63% yes and 40, and 63% yes and 26% maybe. And that maybe, maybe people just aren't familiar with the concept. So I want to talk a little bit about this because you'll see it in the designs, but I think it's important that you understand it because it's a big part of the concept of what a center of government building is to us. I think this trend probably started with, like, the Apple Store, where those employees are not, they're not transactional. They're like shaking your hand, they're standing next to you, they're greeting you, they're welcoming you. And then, you saw it evolve, like, in the last five, six years in banking services, where banks are less transactional. They're not like them on one side of the desk and you on the other side of the service counter, right? So we're thinking about the center of government in a similar way. So not only will, when we're working with all the departments within the county to say, what services do you provide that we can pull out of your department and put down on the first floor right when people walk into the building as a one-stop? So basically, all county services delivered from one location. So there's a concept of real integration there that is much faster for you. You just, like, a, you know, a 30 or 40-minute visit where you're looking for the department and then going in and checking in three times might be able to happen once at a one-stop sort of reader station with a cross-trained individual. But we're also thinking that the building becomes an opportunity for that one-stop, cross-trained county employee to show you how to do it on your phone or show you how to do it on a computer in the lobby, so that next time you might be able to sort of just take advantage of the service from your house. So a lot of these concepts that we, you know, have been seeing in, you know, in banking and in retail the last number of years, like, how do we better deliver services? We're feeling that architecture might be able to, you know, support that. How important is ease of access versus enhanced security? We knew that this would be balanced, like, we wanted to find the balance between ease of access and security, although we are seeing across the country, you know, sort of best practice is a higher level of security, especially in municipal buildings. So there is likely to be, you know, some type of metal detector or security at the, you know, before you enter the building. But we're thinking, like, because of the, you know, after a balanced approach, 35% of people that filled out the survey wanted ease of access rather than high security. What we're seeing there is we want the building to feel welcoming. So when you come into the building, you're not turned away by security, but you're welcomed in, you know, into the, through security and into the one-stop. This is, I'm almost through these questions, sorry it's taking a while. But this is, this is the data that, like, was it, that you'll see as we continue the presentation in the design. Select the style that would be most appropriate. At the end of the presentation, we'll talk about a couple of different, you know, conceptual styles for the building and show you some illustrations. The illustrations that we show will tend to be more, you know, historic proportions, some historic materials, but contemporary use and detailing of those materials, which was, you know, almost 60% of the preferences. You'll see some that are, you know, a little bit more historic and some that are a little bit more, you know, contemporary in terms of the style of the building. So that was the sort of summary of some of the feedback that we received and how we're thinking about it. And you'll see that, what I hope that you see in the presentation, we start talking about floor plans and the site design, is how these, how your responses are manifesting themselves through design. I want to talk a little bit about the sustainable vision for the project because I think this sort of sets us on a path of what we're hoping to achieve with this building. So certainly, in terms of energy and emissions, you know, the intent is to eliminate onsite fossil fuels, and this will be an all-electric building. And a big part of the all-electric portion is the use of geothermal heating and cooling for the project. We've done some preliminary energy modeling, you know, on our site for our building footprint and volume, and we believe that we'll be able to achieve a 44% reduction in the use of energy to base models and current energy codes, which will equate to about a $34,000 per year savings just in energy alone. So these are some targets, you know, that we're working towards as we're designing. In terms of material and embodied carbon, we'll be prioritizing low-embodied-carbon materials. So the designs that you're seeing tonight, we're thinking in terms of mass timber, more than structural steel. We'll be using carbon for, like, foundations or piles. There will be, we'll need some, you know, concrete on the project, but when we use concrete, we're looking at low-carbon concrete with, you know, different types of, maybe, you know, fly ash concrete or something. And then, we believe that we can achieve a diversion of 80% of the construction and deconstruction waste from landfill. So that's a sort of target that we're putting on the design, but also on the construction of the project, is just diversion of materials from landfill. In terms of water efficiency, we believe we can sort of beat code requirements and baselines by 30%. A lot of that is just through the use of low-efficient fixtures, but we're also exploring the possibility of rainwater harvesting. So water from the roof that falls on the building, we would collect it in a storage tank and use it. I mean, majority of the water that's used in this building is used for toilet flushing. So we don't need, you know, drinking water, standard water for that. And again, like, a lot of things, some of the things on this list are priorities, but they're all sort of pending budget, final budget decisions and things. But these are, these are the goals the design team's establishing with the county for the project. In terms of health and comfort, provide daylight access in all regularly occupied spaces. And then, utilize low-emitting materials, you know, low VOCs and just in terms of the selection of the materials of, you know, carpet and finishes. And then, finally, in terms of the landscape, you'll see use of native landscaping with no permanent irrigation, you know, on the site. The building will utilize bird-friendly glazing where we have glass. And both the site and the building will strive to reduce heat island effect with use of either high SRI roofing or integrated green roofs or, you know, these other strategies that are, I mean, encouragingly are becoming more prevalent in the design of buildings today. So Tim, why don't you take us through the, I think we're going to try to save the questions for the end, so we're going to try to get through the presentation in an hour and save half an hour for your questions. So I see some of you taking notes. Thank you.
Thanks, Koi. So, early, early to mid-spring, we did a parking study of the area that's kind of detailed here. We did parking data collection over two days in late April when both universities were still in session and also the Ithaca City Schools were still within session. So we made sure that to include everybody that was here and nobody, you know, escaped on vacation or went away for the end of the school year. And that parking data collection consisted of basically walking up and down the streets that you see in the highlighted area here and the two garages at Green Street and Seneca Street, and recording the number of people that were parked on the street or in the garages from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM over the course of a couple of days. And then, we averaged that data to present what we're going to show you here today. So we took a look at a couple of different walking radii. First was the three-minute walking radii, which is roughly a little less than a quarter mile from the center of government building, and that's where we concentrated our parking data collection. And then, we also did an analysis from a 10-minute parking, a 10-minute walking radius to determine how much free on-street parking there is within that 10-minute walking radius. So, again, these are the streets which you see highlighted in blue. That's all the on-street parking that we looked at and all the blocks. And then, the two garages, which are in orange and green. And for the on-street parking supply, within that three-minute radius, there's a total of 352 parking spaces. Roughly 275 are two-hour, the two-hour paid metered parking. And then, you can see the distribution of the rest of them. There's 16 handicap spaces, 31 spaces that are either 30-minute or 15-minute loading zones, a couple of short-term parking spaces, and then some hotel drop-off pickup. There were eight free spaces and then one car-share parking. In terms of the garage spaces, there's a total of about 924 parking garage spaces. When I talk about public, those are spaces that are free and open to the public. There's 341 in the Seneca and 345 in the Green Street Garage. There is a number of spaces that are reserved in both garages for hotel parking. And then, the Seneca Garage also has some EV parking and some employee parking and a couple of short-term spaces. So when we look to the on-street parking, we look at the parking regulations. As you can see, the blue is the two-hour metered parking. The red that's up in the right-hand corner is actually the free spaces that are available. And then, there's some of the loading zones and some of the short-term parking that are 10 minutes or less for loading zones and then the hotel parking spaces. So when we look at the on-street parking availability, the average over the course of a couple of days, so in the publicly available street parking that's greater than 30 minutes, which is basically the two-hour, the two-hour parking metered, there's almost 300 spaces. And you can see during the course of the day, there's at least 150 to 160 spaces that are available at any one time. So there is a significant amount of on-street spaces that are available at metered parking spaces. Then, you look at the total, you look at the total of 352 spaces, at any one time, there's about 200 spaces being utilized, so there's about 150 left there. For the off-street parking, we looked at both garages, the Seneca Street Garage in blue and the Green Street Garage is in orange, and then the green is a total of both those garages. And you can see at any one time, there is over 220 garage, total garage spaces that are available at any one time throughout the course of the day, with the most busy time between 12:00 and 1:00 PM. So when we look at the parking demand, we have, you know, there's two parts. There's the employee parking and then there's the visitor parking. In terms of employee parking, there's about 187 employees that were currently accounted for in the parking study. There's the spaces that are around this facility here, along with a couple of other buildings located nearby. For the new building, we need to accommodate about 256 total space, total employees, which includes some of the people that are going to be staying in these buildings around here. So really, the net difference is about 69 additional employees that need to be accommodated within the area. In terms of visitor parking, if you visited any of the government offices, the county government offices, there was a four-week survey that was done at all the county departments that showed a total of 653 unique visits, and of those, about 490 people drove, which is about 70% of the people driving, about 30% of people who walked with the bus or found some other means to get there. So that really conservatively, out of those four weeks, it conservatively averages about 20 unique visits per day. They stay an average of about 19 to 20 minutes, which equates to about four visitors per hour, really that we need to accommodate for visitor parking on the low end. And you'll see when we get to the slide, when we talk about how we're going to accommodate that, we're going to more than double that in terms of have the allowable spaces for those visitors.
Pardon me? Just before you go on, what's the 128 building? What does that mean? Oh, it's, it's, it's the annex.
Oh, it's, it's, it's the Annex. It's Building C.
Oh, so that's 128?
Yeah.
Over on Buffalo Street?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So in terms of the complex right here, there's, right now, there's parking for 104 vehicles to park on the site. And you can see the distribution of who parks here right now. There's one space reserved for the county clerk. There's 52 for the county employees. There's a bunch of state court employees, judges, legislators, electric vehicles, district attorney, facilities operator. So of those 104 people that currently park here, we still need to accommodate 52 of those people for when we redesign the site. And a lot of those, you'll see, will be accommodated on the existing site. Right now, there's, we're going to keep, out of the 44 spaces that are onsite, 39 is going to be kept. And you can see that's, those are some of the state court employees, the county clerk, the judges, the legislators. So between the two sites, we have about 69 total spaces. So we're going to have approximately 30 spaces in the new site. And of those 69 total, 52 spaces are going to be dedicated to the courthouse staff legislators. And then we're also including 10 spaces dedicated to the county EV fleet vehicles. So that really leaves about seven spaces between the two sites for short-term parking and ADA accessible parking. And that, those short-term parking is really dedicated to loading and unloading the building, employees that have to come into the office and grab something really quick before they go to someplace else. So that's how we're going to accommodate the onsite parking. So where do we accommodate the off-site parking? So there's a county-owned lot, the Cascadilla Lot, that houses, that has approximately space for about 40 cars to use. Along the curbside, right directly in front of the building, there's going to be space for up to 18 vehicles that are currently, Quay is kind of, those are shown in the purple right there. There also are the Seneca and Green Streaks garages. And then, like I said, we did the 10-minute walking radius to figure out how much free parking there is in this area. And there's approximately 800 spaces that allow 24-hour parking within this 10-minute walk radius. So that's really how we're going to accommodate both visitor and staff parking for this new building. Now I'll pass it.
Whoops. Okay. Yeah, I think, I think this will be all right if everyone can hear me from there. Okay. Hi, everybody. So I'm going to talk to you briefly about some preliminary concepts for the design of the site. So let me start by defining the site.
Pardon me, can you get about four inches from the mic? Otherwise, it's, I mean, we can barely hear you and I know on Zoom they probably are going to have trouble.
Okay. Is this better?
Yeah.
I'll just not move. All right. So you can see on this slide, the, the site is shown over existing conditions with, as a dashed red, red square. Okay, there we go. And this diagram is showing the approximate footprint of the new building as well as the site that is outlined in the dark green. So when we're thinking about designing the site, we have some goals in mind. The first is to frame and ground the new building. But also, we're thinking about the site design as the chance to offer new public space amenities to both employees and visitors to the building as well as members of the general public. So we're not looking to duplicate what's already found in the adjacent Dewitt Park, but to augment that. And we're also, as Quay mentioned earlier, we're looking really hard at how to make the design as sustainable as possible. So this is things like using, using as much tree canopy coverage as possible, local, potentially sourcing local materials and using native plantings, as well as doing what we can to encourage and facilitate active transportation. All right. So I'm going to briefly present two preliminary concepts. Both draw aesthetic inspiration from the rich natural history and resources of the area. So this concept A was inspired aesthetically by the local hydrology, the rivers and streams and waterfalls in the area. In this concept and the second concept, the public space is divided into two sort of zones. The first, oh, and I do have a mouse here. The first zone is something we're calling community porch. So this is an elevated plaza at the main entry to the building that could accommodate informal gatherings, tables, chairs. And in this concept, it's framed by a monumental stairs that sort of wraps the corner here and lends a grandiosity to the entire design here. The second zone that we'll talk about is a mid-block plaza that is between the Boardman House and the new building. So this, this plaza space serves to buffer the space between the two buildings and also to serve as gathering. This particular concept shows a splitter island that, that would include seating. It would include plantings and it lends sort of a more intimate feel to the space. Actually, let me back up. So for both of the concepts, we're also thinking very hard about how to activate the perimeters and to provide a variety of seating that would facilitate social interactions, folks coming to sit and have lunch with their friends. So this concept was inspired by local geology and the, the rock formations in the local gorges. So it has sort of a more angular appearance. This concept also includes two primary zones. In this concept, the, the entry plaza is a little bit more shielded from the street, which gives it a little bit more of a private feel and is accessed only by this single stair here at the building entry as well as ramps for accessible entry. The plaza space is actually more open in this concept to maximize programmable space and to allow fire access as needed. Another, another differentiator with this concept is that we envision this parking area here to be flush with the surrounding hardscape. And this would more easily allow it to be included with the, with the, with the main plaza for special events or something like a farmer's market on a regular basis. And once again, we are thinking very hard about how to facilitate social interactions and provide amenities for people in the area. That is... I'm not, are you up now?
I am.
Okay, I will switch.
Okay, so I'll just be on this slide for a minute. I think if you were in the last meet, meeting, you would have seen this diagram that talks about really, or helps us to think about the departments that are going to be public-facing and the ones that are more internal county facing. And the idea that the first floor and the second floor would be housing those departments that are the public-facing and, and the upper floors become more of the internal functions of the department. So this shows the first floor on one of the site plans that Laura has just explained. And what you can start to see here is how the community porch that Laura was describing interfaces with this lobby. And this lobby, if you can imagine, it's all glass, really having such a visual connection between the community porch and the lobby to bring people into the building visually. And the main entrance into the building would be through these doors. And before you get in through the security checkpoint, you would be welcomed by an extremely inviting lobby space that we might even think about as a community living room. So the idea is inviting, warm, and, you know, can be a multipurpose space. Once you enter through the security, which again, we can't really talk too in detail because we're still working on it, but, you know, hopefully it does the job in the most minimal visual way as possible. We have our one-stop shop that Quay was talking about earlier, which is really a one-stop space or desk that many of the department functions, the county services that are transactional, they can actually happen with staff at this desk who might be able to assist and help people with any questions that they have, welcome them, call up to the departments that they're going to. And the, the stair and the elevator form a beautiful node at the east with big glass windows that actually repeat up through the building as waiting areas and lounge areas. This whole center area here, we're calling is the core. And that repeats up through the four floors with conference rooms and culminating at the west end with big glass windows overlooking to the west. Another node that is more dedicated for staff. So on this first floor, we have COFA, the county clerk, and human rights at this point as, as our departments that we're showing. Now, just a little bit of a preliminary take, just a preliminary investigation, just to sort of illustrate what that lobby that I was talking about earlier, like when you walk in through these doors, you can see a lobby here that, that has a visual connection to our one-stop shop and at least, you know, the one department that is straight ahead, which happens to be at this point, the county office for the aging. But the lobby would serve many functions. This community living room, learning about the history of Tompkins County, displays, exhibit, also an idea of reusing some of the historical elements from the buildings that are being taken down as part of this project. There's that beautiful mid-century gate at 308 East Tioga Street and, sorry, North Tioga Street that might be incorporated at this location. But you can see a visual transparency between the community porch and the lobby and also the visual connection to the one-stop shop and the departments beyond, as well as this two-story space, visibility up to the second floor and hints of the departments that are up there. And as you come through the lobby, you come through the security, you come around across from our one-stop shop, perhaps there is this area that's dedicated for the one-stop-shop staff to come and assess, assist residents who are coming to visit the building with anything that they need. It's a, it's a space for people to wait, helping them on the computer, helping them to figure out the forms. And as we move up through the building, you can start to see a repeating, a repeating sort of theme. So we talked a lot about the first floor. The second floor to its right has an, has a opening, open-to-below area to the lobby because that lobby is a double-story space. You have, when you get off of these eleva, the stairs or the elevators, you'll be greeted by conference rooms and all through this east-west, what we're calling almost like an interior street, you have nodes for sitting. And then we have some beautiful spaces for respite for the staff. And we have our departments at the north and south. As you move up through the building, we start to, as I had mentioned before, get to those departments that are more internal, although we, we will likely have one more public-facing right at the top of the stairs on this third floor. And as you move up to the fourth floor, the employees are, are going to have a beautiful amenity of a large break room with a rooftop terrace that faces out to the west and overlooks Dewitt Park. So I think I captured everything here. Yep.
Okay, so now, step, we're going to sort of step outside the building and sort of look at, you know, what the building might look like in terms of, you know, style and aesthetic. I'm going to give you some like Reader Digest, or I guess what is it called when you like, Cliff, the Cliff Notes version of the survey. As we're talking about either like different site concepts or some of the interior concepts or we have like three and a half, four different variations of what the exterior of the building might be, we do ask like to pick your favorite if you have a favorite. But the information that we're really looking for are, for each of these concepts that I'll share with you, talk about like the things that you like about that concept or the things that you don't like about that concept. Because ultimately, it's not going to be one of these three or four like elevations of the building that it'll look like. It'll be, it'll be some combination of hopefully the things that we hear your feedback about that you like or the things that we hear your feedback about that you don't like. And if we do our jobs, we'll sort of take all that input and sort of resolve it to, to the right solution. We don't, we don't feel like we, we don't expect to have the right solution for you today, but we do hope to share a lot of ideas and we hope to get responses to like, oh, I really like that or, oh, I don't like that. And the survey is asking for every, for every site concept, for every architectural concept, what are the things you like, what are the things you don't like? And again, like if you, like if you're willing to sort of give us a little bit of your time and provide that input, I think it'll be really transformative in terms of the direction that we go moving forward. So these next couple of slides are just, and I'll flip through them, you know, Truman'sburg. Just thinking in terms of what is Tompkins County architecture. I mean, we, I think it's important that this building represent, you know, all of the municipalities and different communities that we have. A lot of our buildings are sort of fairly traditional. A lot of the buildings that, you know, even the things that are sort of commercial in scale have a little bit of a residential, you know, feel to them, so it makes it challenging. You know, here in Lansing, we have some larger-scale things. And we also have these waterfalls that, you know, are, that we're referencing from a site design perspective and a lot of water, rotten. And now this is the immediate context of our center of government site. So you're familiar with these buildings, the courthouse, the post office. Boardman House is a residential-scale, beautiful building, but it like holds its own in the context of this very municipal architectural style. This type of building is very expensive if you can even find laborers to build like this today. So there are very few buildings that are really getting built like this anymore. However, like we do a lot of projects that we feel, we refer to them as timeless, that really fit in well to this type of environment. So Breckenridge, Tompkins Headquarters, the addition to Southworth, Southworth Library. Right, so you can see like, I hope you can begin to see sort of, you know, some vocabulary that's shared between, you know, these historic buildings and these new buildings. And when we talked to Shipbo, and we actually have a preservation architect on our team, the, the goals of the historic district aren't to build old buildings. Like the goals of the historic district are to build things that complement and blend in with old buildings. So we're thinking in terms of... So we're thinking in terms of scale and proportion and lines and materials that are respectful to the old buildings. So we have three, three and a half concepts that we're going to share with you today, and I'm going to talk a little bit about each one. And again, it's not about picking your favorite, although if you have a strong favorite, the survey will ask you to sort of show that, but think about the things that you might like or not like about these as we look at them and talk about them. So I think some of the things to highlight in this is it begins to look like a three-story building. The fourth story on all of the concepts is set back. So a lot of the buildings in the historic district are, you know, sort of express themselves as three-story. The courthouse is about a three-story building. So we need four stories to like get the program in on the site, but the fourth story will be set back, and that's consistent among all of the options you'll see. And then we're beginning to think about materials. So here, you can see like much of the perimeter of the building, like so the sides that you don't see in this concept might be predominantly brick. So a lot of red brick around the building, maybe a similar red brick to Boardman House. But then where we wrap the corner, and it's, we've sort of made a decision early in design that it's important to have a presence both on Buffalo and Tioga, you know, sort of inviting both streets in. And you can, if you look at the site plan there, you know, we talked about this sort of community courtyard in front of the building. Well, that, that's inviting people from both streets evenly. So this, you know, the stone, the limestone or the cast stone portion of the building that's sort of a feature material would wrap around the corner. And if you look at the tops of all those five bays of windows, you know, we're thinking maybe, you know, Caroline, Danby, Dryden, like that each of the communities might be represented and brought into sort of downtown. I mean, Ithaca is sort of the city that we're in, but it's also the downtown in many ways of Tompkins County. So this is, this is concept one, and you can see a lot of the materials that we're drawing from the site, even the, I mean, the building across Tioga isn't the most beautiful building, but like it's a, it's a stone-colored building, although it's Ephesus, so we're not, our building won't be Ephesus. It would be, you know, a cast stone or a limestone, we're thinking at this point. But then you can see the material from Tompkins, you know, Trust Headquarters, like this beautiful limestone on top, as a layer on top of the brick. Option 1B is a, is a variation of this, so conceptually, it's a very similar building. But what we're doing here is starting to bring in some of the roof form, you know, from, maybe from the courthouse, maybe from the Boardman House. It also begins to break down the scale of the, of the project. So while it's not a big building, like I don't think there's an issue with the scale, you know, in this concept, you can see how the scale is brought down a little bit more in concept 1B. So that's really the difference between those two options. Concept 2, and in the survey, these are referred to as building concept 1, building concept 2. So, you know, in terms of the things you like or things you might not like so much, this concept is really thinking about how do we like wrap the corner with glass? So it begins to bring in some more contemporary, you know, use of glass. In many ways, this sort of begins to open up that two-story volume more to the street, has a more contemporary feel to it. You can see in some of the precedent images, you know, the use of stone and the use of glass is, could create a really warm and inviting structure. The glass would wrap around the corner, so again, you know, presence on, on both streets. And you can see again the scale of expressing itself as a three-story building, but in reality, it's a four-story building because of the setback. And I wanted to share this image because this, this building could be done in, in stone or brick. So this is a similar expression of a red brick building, but it also begins to speak about the heavy timber structure. So in, instead of structural steel for the building, we are thinking, you know, from a carbon perspective, that the structure of the building might be heavy timber, and you can see the use of heavy timber as a very warm and inviting, you know, material for a, for a project at this scale. The third concept is more monumental. So this is, this is more of a sort of a sculptural municipal aesthetic. The building on the bottom right is a, is a little bit bigger in scale, but you can see the idea here more clearly of carving away a corner and entering into, you know, something that has a more, a stronger government presence. So we are imagining that this building would probably be predominantly stone. I think this building would also be very homogeneous. So it would be very one-structure, simple, simple building, but still address and invite people into the corner in the same way as, as the other concepts did. This is a QR code to the survey. If you want to, you could start the survey during Q and A. And we wanted to open to, Monica, do you want me to just open to questions now? I don't appreciate, questions are okay now? And then you'll wrap up with the last slide at the end?
Yeah, are you done with your?
Presentation, yep.
Your presentation? Okay.
I would just ask, because we have also several people with us on Zoom, and so the people on Zoom, I would ask to raise their hand at the bottom of your screen, there should be a hand, and then we'll pick one from Zoom and one from, from the audience, you know, and vice versa. So, and if you're in the audience, if you want to raise your hand, if you have a question, go ahead. You were the first one. Yep, to this microphone, that'd be great.
Amanda Kirchgessner, Towne Ulysses, I got a couple of questions. Do we really need a center of government building built in the memory of Jason Molino's ego? Number two, what is sustainable? Will all of the materials be locally sourced? I mean, you love to talk about carbon footprint and blah, 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 but regenerative would actually be using vacant, empty space downtown, and we have Herald Square that's been vacant since it was constructed. We also have the Convention Center at Astoria, which has also been virtually vacant since constructed. I understand $40 million in a grand new building is like really exciting, but it's not too late. Public safety desperately needs these dollars. I don't know if you saw the email I just sent. There's a public health risk in our Dewitt Park right now. There's, there's active sharps. I would have picked it up, but I don't have the tools. And I know the City Parks Committee is going to, the parks are going to be on it tomorrow, but we need to address the public health crisis before we spend money on a building, guys. Look at how beautiful this space is, and it's open to the public and it's right on the park. If you need more space, seriously, Herald Square has been vacant. It's right next to the City of Ithaca Government Building. Maybe you guys can work together a little better. Please explore other options and build outs before you decide on anything like this. You know, maybe we'll import some Italian marble. I don't know. Maybe some children from Africa will mine it for us. Please, you know, will there be rooftop community garden opportunities? Like, give me a break. Do not do this. Please don't do this. We need to put the money into the people who actually really need it, and that is public health and safety right now. We don't need to build a building in Jason Molino's memory. Like, it's a silly, silly, stupid idea. We need 40 million for public health and public safety. Please. I understand we put a lot of time into it and we spent money. Great, I'm glad you guys got paid. I want people to get paid, but we need these other things a lot more. And this is going to cost us $70 million or more by the time it's been bonded out and paid for over the years. We need public health and safety. We need it. We don't need a county, like a center of government building. It would be beautiful, but please look at the vacant spaces downtown before you do this. Please. Thank you.
Quay, do you want to stop? Thank you. Can we pick somebody from Zoom? Michelle?
Yes, hello, thank you. Thanks to everybody who presented, and my question is, I'm hoping to find the source of information or if we could drill it down into it tonight, if there's time, about the fact that the Board of Elections is going to be elsewhere. I think that service that the county provides for free and fair elections is more important than ever, and I'm hoping there's some consideration about just making sure that it stays in the fold and really visible to everybody and not outside of downtown somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Does anybody want to respond to that?
We'd like to add one.
No? Okay. You had, you had your hand up before.
Yeah. I think it would be worthwhile to get a few facts on the table, because I know there's other people that want to ask about it, and they're certainly welcome to have that, but maybe it would be good if there was a few statements we could make first.
Oh, absolutely. That's why I asked, yeah. If there's a response, okay.
Of course, do you want to try it, or I can?
Okay, so, yeah, you can go first and then I'll chime in.
Well, I, just a few things I want to make sure everyone knows is that the relocation of the Board of Elections is temporary, just during construction. So the plan is to bring it right back here, there or there or, you know, within a block. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that, because I spoke to someone on Friday and they did not realize that. Maybe that's the, maybe that's all that needed to be said right now, of course, if there's more you wanted to say.
Yes, I think when we did the first presentation, the discussion was about the size of the building and the fact that based on the structures around that building, the determination was made, the feasibility of going up to five floors, and also the fact because of the equipment aboard of election, if they will fit in the building, they will need access to the ground floor. And we also had the county class office that needed to also be on the ground floor. So being on the ground floor wasn't feasible for the Board of Elections to be in the building. So the proposal from the architects was to determine a different location for the Board of Elections. For us to be able to tear, continue on the progress of the construction, we need to deconstruct those three buildings, the old key bank and the other two buildings on the site. For us to be able to do that, Board of Elections, County IT, and Assessment Department need to relocate. As probably many of you are aware, the county administration has moved from the current old jail to the Green Street, as well as Human Resources, to pave way of relocating the department in that building. So any location that the Board of Elections will move into will be a swing space on a temporary basis until we determine where their permanent home will be. The county currently owns the Human Services at Nest where COFA is. We are, we are evaluating that space to identify if it will be suitable or if the county will need to acquire a different location in the City of Ithaca for the permanent home of Board of Elections. So that is in the work. So anywhere the Board of Elections will go outside the city will be on a temporary basis until we determine where in the city will be the permanent location for Board of Elections.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. If you could use a microphone, please, that way the Zoom, the Zoom people can hear you. Thank you, appreciate it.
The question was temporary, but I was also going to say that I was very concerned about the removal of, you know, the moving of the Board of Elections. And I really appreciate the values of community, and it's a beautiful concept, but sometimes I worry that architects don't, it's like in the summer when they do architectural renderings. And so I'm wondering whether we could actually make some adjustments and carve out a little less community space and more space for places like, but my question was temporary, like, can you give me a kind of time, sense of the time?
In an ideal situation, we are moving into the new center of government in late 2028. Is that correct? So that, it is a few years.
Director Willoughby in the interim?
Have we announced that? I can't remember where the temporary space is for the Board of Elections.
No, we are, we are, at the moment, we have seen or visited about 25-plus locations that we are viewing to identify which, if the location will be leased or bought, depending on the cost and what makes financial sense to certain degree and also accessible to, to people who visit that location. So we haven't agreed on a location as our location yet. We've seen several locations in Lansing. It appears based on our swing space need, areas within Lansing may be the most reasonable option that we can tap into right now. Majority of the resource the Board of Elections has right now are actually on, in Lansing. So we are looking at multiple locations. We looked at multiple locations in Lansing. We couldn't find any reasonable space in the city. And also, I think one location that was identified as possible space in the city, we lost, we couldn't get that, we lost that space. So we are looking at some spaces in Lansing. We are hoping to be able to agree on location in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Just one moment, do we have somebody online? Okay, go ahead.
Please state your name, too, please.
My name is Nancy Skipper, and I've done a lot of volunteer work with voting elections and also with new citizens through Tompkins Learning Partners, and I just want to applaud your efforts to look for a location that's within the city ultimately for the Board of Elections. It's incredibly important. I didn't quite, I wasn't able to hear what you were saying about Lansing. I hope that was a temporary location if the one downtown that I think was on Albany Street does not work. And I just want to point out that the people who need the Board of Elections the most are not the type of people who are likely to have filled out our surveys. I filled out one, but a lot of our new voters don't. Most of the voter registration events are held pretty much around the downtown area in Dewitt Park, in the commons, at the public library, South Side Community Center, in the churches. A lot of our newer voters, new citizens, don't have cars. I have often told people how to walk to the Board of Elections, and they look very, very happy. So I hope you can continue to make the Board of Elections accessible and easy to find, especially with, with what's going on in our government now. Supporting democracy is probably one of the single most important things any of us can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I just want, I want to reinforce that, that the Board of Elections should be as close to where it was before, the least disruptive. So if somebody is coming downtown and saying, what? Where is it? Oh, it's just around the corner. It's, it's just down, you know, Court Street, somewhere nearby. I think that's really critical. I have a couple other things regarding, I also want to, as I said here earlier, about the expense and what we need and our priorities, but given this project, I wonder if the group explored other community spaces. There's a lot of buildings that have been renovated or built with a community space on the first floor or that just seem underutilized and are just empty. And there's spaces in the library. Have they been explored as options for community meetings? Not that, they shouldn't be one in the new building, but I just wondered about that. I think the water feature in concept A is a problem. Parking, you know, I love the parking study. People are going to complain about parking if they can't park right in front of the building, so. And because the lobby, the living room space is so centrally located and by Dewitt and has public bathrooms, I think it will get a lot of traffic. And I hope that the maintenance and the cleanliness and who's going to keep it clean is, has been addressed and that if there's needs to be more staff for that, that kind of thing. And I forgot to say, I'm Callie Arthur, and I live downtown.
Could I just respond quickly, Monica? I think that, just to make it clear on parking, when Tim reviewed, when we-
Back off the mic, about four inches of sweet.
When, is that good?
Yeah.
When we, when we reviewed the sign-in sheet data from four weeks of data, sign-in sheet data from all of the departments, we came up with a total of four parking spots would be required, like if they were fully utilized, which there, there's way too much swing to only provide four parking spots. We're proposing that there, for the public, you know, not for employees, but for public, we're proposing that there would be between 10 and 20 parking spots, and we're hoping that we can get them dedicated 20-minute parking spots to the Tompkins County Center of Government Building. So they'd be four visitors, some of them would be ADA accessible, ADA spots dedicated, some of them- Some of them might be, you know, families with children dedicated. But we feel like, you know, 18 might be a well-in-access, but allow us to have dedicated spots for, you know, handicapped, maybe elderly, maybe family with children, and still provide, you know, really convenient parking for the public. The other thing I was just thinking, regardless of where Board of Elections lands, I imagine that a lot of the services that people go to Board of Elections for might still be managed at the One Stop. So like, you know, absentee voting for, like, a lot of, we'll work with, we'll work with Board of Elections to find out what services, you know, don't you need to manage? And then there might be, everyone at the One Stop would be cross-trained, but depending on the services that Board of Elections, you know, should be providing right downtown, based on what we're hearing from you tonight, you know, maybe there's even a dedicated Board of Elections person at the One Stop, especially during certain times of year, you know? So, I mean, again, great comments. It's like, we really appreciate, you know, hearing from you because it helps us design the right building.
Can I also add just a point of clarification? And I apologize if I wasn't clear enough. We're not actually proposing a water feature for Concept A. The geometries are inspired by local water. So no water feature, just curvy lines.
Go ahead. Yes. Denise Katzman, thank you for everyone who has spoken. I want to know, Quay, will there be an RFP for the climate resiliency components of the buildings?
What specify, like, climate resiliency components? What would the RFP be for?
Well, for what you're looking for, for the buildings regarding climate resiliency.
So Tatum Engineering has the contract for carbon primarily, and then Tetra Tech Engineering is doing our energy modeling and MEP design. So I think most of what you're talking about is probably in those two contracts.
Okay, so there's not going to be specific RFPs because you're utilizing those two entities?
Yeah, correct. Well, in terms of the design team, all of that work is under contract already.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Siobhan. I have a lot. I want to start with the window, okay? And the open space. All of this stuff is amazing and better yet, we started with your own space that you get to sit here and work in because I've watched these meetings on Zoom.
Can you move a little closer to the microphone?
I've watched these meetings on Zoom and I got to tell you, this is, this is a really nice space, okay? Now, knowing that people outside access the open space, you want community to come in, right? So what are we doing with the unhoused and those that are using drugs, those that are smoking cigarettes? Because God knows the tobacco is out of control in the county everywhere. You can't control it on the Commons, can't control it at Siri, you don't control it anywhere from where I see. So what makes this space different? Because now it'll be a county building and now you're going to police it because it will be an open, available space with a big window, which looks great. But again, also, it looks great, so now everybody can see inside. And it's appealing to those of us that don't have. So it's a setup for everyone to see how much the county has because everybody else outside is suffering while you all are spending $50 million on a building, talking about a public restroom. And thank God, because we need public restrooms, there are none. The closest public restroom to here is, I'm going to assume, the Commons in Center Ithaca, which closes at what, five, six? There's no restrooms. Then we'll talk about the handicap accessibility. Please stop building these ramps that are 50 feet away from the door because why do we that struggle to walk have to walk further than everybody who is able-bodied? Okay? I just helped people at South Side. I helped two elders on Saturday at South Side because they looked and saw that the ramp was way down there and then they had to walk back and still get in the door and still make it to the gym. That's a lot of steps. People cannot make these steps. You have a stairway. Split it. Give us half the ramp and stairs. Make the able-bodied people walk. How about that? Because everybody keeps looking at us and swearing that we are able-bodied and we are not, and we are struggling. But you have $50 million to spend, to borrow. The jail is suffering. The seniors, y'all gave them $300 stipend to spend. They don't care for housing. Y'all got $50 mil. I promise you I can show you where to spend $50 million. Ask the real community because I don't know where y'all are surveying. I don't know who's filling out the survey. I shared the survey on Facebook. I didn't fill it out myself and I'm going to tell a lie. I don't know who you're talking to, but it's the wrong people. People are outside suffering and y'all are in here passing bills and spending money like everybody outside is living a great life. Things are broken. Open the Human Service Building. Open the, what is it? The Human Rights Office. Please open that back up. Let's stop worrying about how much it's going to cost us because y'all got money. Open the office back up. Let's get somebody in there. Let's talk about these human rights that are being violated all the time, every day here in Tompkins County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody online? No. Again, if you're online on Zoom, if you want to raise your hand there, then we can get to you. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Zach Nguyen. I believe earlier it was spoken about the major financial impact this is going to have on the county. And I read today about the $11 million budget shortfall. Previously, it had been suggested by Amanda Kirschjessner to utilize the space that is the downtown conference center for office spaces. And considering the conversations that have been happening, most recently at the Industrial Development Agency, about how, you know, there's not enough business at that conference center to make it viable due to a number of circumstances which you're all very well aware of, it might be better to, instead of spending $50 million, that's the estimate at this point, to utilize space that is already available in the community. It would put the offices, many of them at least, right next to City Hall, which would, you know, allow a little bit more cooperation between the city and the county, which I believe is lacking. And instead of, you know, I know the property is already purchased and it's basically a foregone conclusion at this point, but I believe it would be worth considering an alternative to spending $50 million on a completely new build for something that you can kind of live without. The community can live without a new $50 million Center of Government building. People at the jail, you know, it was basically a fork in the road decision to either do the jail or the Center of Government. You guys went with the Center of Government and decided to refurbish what was, you know, a decrepit facility. Now, with inflation and the likely, you know, ballooning costs if you were to kick this project down the road, I understand the temptation to jump into it now and just get it done, but there are empty storefronts, has been mentioned, all over town, and centralizing everything in one spot, it would have its upsides, but it does have a dollar figure attached to it that can the county really afford this at this point? And if there's an $11 million shortfall this year, what is it going to be the next and the year after that? You could save $50 million by not doing this right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak? Go ahead.
Good evening. Robert Lynch, Councilperson, Town of Enfield. We, the Enfield Town Board, have been doing some thinking about this project and we've been thinking outside the box. On the 9th of July, our Town Board passed a resolution. Each legislature should have a copy of that resolution. And it resolved that the Enfield Town Board hereby encourages the Tompkins County Legislature and Tompkins County Administration to consider seriously and thoughtfully various alternative siting locations for a Tompkins County Center of Government. Alternatives including, but not necessarily limited to, buildings made available at the Cornell Business Park. After our last community engagement meeting in late June, and I thank Mike Sigler for bringing it up and we followed up on it, there was a study by the county administration of a possible purchase of one or more buildings at the Cornell Business Park, which had been foreclosed on by Tompkins Community Bank. Since that time, the closing has taken place. The bank bought some $74 million worth of buildings for $50 million. And those buildings, much of that of real estate is being offered by the bank for sale. It has so many advantages and we, the Enfield Town Board, considered them. It's available space, some, at least one of those buildings is vacant and could be repurposed right now for county facilities. There's free parking, available parking, and it's in perhaps a safer place, a more accessible place. And I tell you, when you walk onto that property, you feel good. You feel like you're in a rural environment, there's open air, you can breathe. And that's a positive thing to say. So we, the Town Board, decided that we would go on record on that and we're glad we did. At that meeting, Randy Brown, who's head of the Downtown Facilities Committee, our Enfield representative, one of two, was at that meeting. And here's a quote from him. "I don't like building buildings when there's empty buildings." And he's head of the committee that's looking into a new downtown facility and he is very critical of that. I'm not saying he's opposed to it, but he is watching it with a very watchful eye. And I'm glad he's in this room tonight. I'll turn my attention briefly to what was proposed by the architects here for the downtown building, if you go ahead and build it, because there's several things that triggered thoughts in my mind. One is, why don't you have a basement? The basement could be used for parking. It could be used for extra space. It would not be visible to the public and it would provide you some room to grow. That would be one thing. The parking study, I'm not impressed by it. I think the way things are calculated, employees will still be parking street-side and feeding parking meters. And I'll tell you, employees who have worked for the county hate that idea of having to pay money to come to work. And so that's another thing to think about. I think the parking study has a problem. I think some of those designs, I'm not particularly impressed with, but I'll let other people decide what they like and what they don't. And also, I looked at the first-floor design. The county clerk's office somehow seems very small. The office for the aging, which I know legislator Brown says should be elsewhere, seems to have a lot of space. The county clerk seems to be small. I can't believe it's even as big as the county clerk's office right now in the basement of the courthouse. So consider the fact that the clerk one may need to grow. Maybe the clerk has weighed in on this, but it just seems like a small facility and it looked like from that first-floor design is that human rights would have to access through the county clerk's office. That didn't look right either. So I think there's a ways to go on this. I would say, think outside the box, think outside of the downtown courthouse complex and keep your options open, keep an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Does, would anybody like to respond?
Are there more people waiting to speak? Do we know? I have something to say when everyone's spoken, yeah.
Okay. Nobody online in the room? Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to remind people of a few things if they don't know or have forgotten. One of the drivers of this whole project is that New York State is kicking us out of the county courthouse. So the district attorney's offices are in there and the county clerk's offices are in there and we must vacate that building. So we need to put them somewhere. So that, I just want to remind everyone, that is one of the driving forces behind having to spend some money to find a place for those people to work. The other thing I want to say is that we have about 800 employees and I always felt like that is one of my constituencies, right? I represent the people of Danby and Caroline. In some ways, I represent everyone in the county. I'm responsible to my fellow legislators. I'm also responsible to those 800 employees to provide them a decent place to work. A lot of the work spaces of our county employees are sub-par. I'm sorry, what?
Closets. They're working in closets.
They are overcrowded and outdated and I unapologetically think that we owe them better. We owe them better. These are decently paid people, but these are not rich, elite people, right? These are people doing everyday work, including buying the food and medicine for our jail and providing the legal services and financial services for our jail and for all the, what was the word that was used? Miserable people? I don't know, there was some word that was used for the people out there.
Suffering.
Suffering people. Agreed. County led, the county government is here to serve the people of this county and to provide the needs for people that are in need. And they need a decent place to work to do that. So I am unapologetically supporting a good workspace for our employees and I hope you keep that in mind when you're thinking about who's going to benefit and who's not from this project. Thanks.
Thank you. That is Senator Brown.
I've been skeptical about this building since day, since day one, but as Dan mentioned, we, this process has been going on for at least eight years. And we have to move out of the courthouse and the New York State court system is not taking no for an answer. And we've slowly been moving other departments out of there. There are departments over time that have moved out. And there are also departments like workforce development in Center Ithaca, which is really a bad space, not a very comfortable space. It's not accessible really for people. And so we need to find a place for them. The New York State, and so they're going to end up in the old jail, which is over here, which I think is a good spot for them. And then New York State's going to, their employment office will come with them and they will rent space from us for that. The, for me, I hear what people say about the unusable space. I think the library is underutilized. It's the biggest building the county owns and it's a great space. I'd like to see it be much more vibrant. I see that there are things that the county could be doing there that would make it a better place and more accessible for whatever department was put there, but I don't think the rest of the legislature is interested in doing anything with that. The, I worry about the cost of this. It is what it is. Whether it's a 40,000 square foot building or 55,000 square foot building, this process is taking a long time. The county spent $3 million on this land over here and we're going to spend more money taking those buildings down. And I think a nice building will be built there by the county. And I'd like to see it smaller and less expensive for, for, I would like to come at Board of Elections. I think it's really important, but I don't think it's as important where it is because you can register anywhere. You can register at DMV, you can register at DSS, you can register online, you can, and there's all these pop-ups. I Newfield has them and all the towns have them. So you can really register anywhere. And so what I really find really interesting is from the parking study that we roughly have 20 people a day, if I did my, if I read that right, that are coming and visiting our current departments that are going to be part of this. That's not very many. So this building isn't really for constituents, in my mind, because it's for our employees, to your point. I mean, the, and some spaces are very substandard. I mean, I was in over at one of the offices over at the old jail and it's half the size of this. And the windows didn't work and it was stuffy and it was hot and it could barely turn around in there with this desk and chair. It couldn't have been 80 square feet. I'm not sure how big it was, but. And so there are definitely some substandard buildings here. But I, but I look at, and thanks for indulging me, the, I look at the building that we bought where the history center is, underutilized space. Nice big space there for meeting space there, drastically underutilized. The, and so I look at things like that, I see a waste of space, you know, for me. And we're going to build more spaces to other people's content when we're not utilizing spaces we have. So I realize this is going to happen. The, we've spent so much time and money so far. I hope we can come up with a building that meets the needs of people and I'll probably end up voting for it, but I'm still skeptical about spending that much money, so.
Thank you. Legislator Lane.
I just wanted to quickly say thank you to everybody that came here because we all appreciate hearing from you. And I know our team that's working on this proposal for a building appreciates it.
I just wanted to quickly say thank you to everybody that came here because we all appreciate hearing from you, and I know our team that's working on this proposal for a building appreciates it.
Do you want to switch to the last slide, maybe, as a final wrap-up? So obviously, this project is going to be going on for quite some time. And so I just wanted to draw your attention to our project webpage, which is the first QR code on the county website where we constantly update information. So soon, today's presentation will be up there and the link to the recording as well. The second QR code goes to the new survey. So it's the same QR code, but it goes to the new survey where people can chime in about the different design option and basically everything that we talked about today, and you can chime in and give your feedback, what you like and what you don't like. And then the last QR code is also on our website. This is where you can sign up for the newsletter, so you don't have to check back on the website to see if there's new information up there. We send out information into people's inboxes whenever there are updates. So again, with those presentations, with the presentation today and the new survey, there will be an email newsletter going out with that information, and people can receive that directly in their email. Yes?
Can you say again, when, if I'm going out of town next week, do I still have time to fill the survey when I get back? Or am I in there?
Yeah, how long--
Yeah, we can leave the survey up. We left the first survey up until the day before this meeting, but we sort of, the information we presented was a week old at that point. So I think this survey will be up for at least a month or two. Yeah.
Yes. And again, there will be notification when it's getting close to the closing date or to the end date, so people have a chance, you know, at least a week or so to chime in. And on your way out, if you don't have it already on your phone, there are also those little postcards that have those QR codes on it. You can take them with you, you can share them, bring them to the office or to the friends or whatnot. But those are really, those are really the places where the information will be and where all the information will be stored and collected. And if there's something that you can't find or that you thought you should find there, again, there's an email address there where you can contact us to let us know if there's anything that should be up there for this project. Yes?
One second.
Go ahead. Yes.
I just wanted to thank all the staff from Holt for doing a phenomenal job. It's been very thoughtful what you have presented. I know we got on a different track during the discussion today, and I just wanted to acknowledge the job you've done.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for everybody who came out today and spent their time here with us, to people who joined us online, on Zoom, or watching on YouTube, and to everybody here, to the design team and the legislators who came and staff. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're Services Board meeting, I'm sorry.
I noticed--
No problem.
How'd that go?
How'd it go?
Good.
Good.
We get at least once a year.
Seven.